Okay, welcome to the Town of Cumberland Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, December 20th, 2022. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Happy holidays. I'll call the meeting to order. We have everybody except for Bridget here tonight. First item of business is to approve the minutes from November 15th, 2022.
All moved.
Thank you, Peter.
Second.
Thank you, Paul. Okay, any discussion on the matter, amendments, anything? Okay, all in favor? Unanimous motion carries. Thank you. All right, staff site plan approvals. There was one major staff site plan review. Carla, do you want to go through anything on that?
It was an amendment to an approved site plan for LGC, formerly the main standards over on Upper Route One. And as it says here, they added some mechanical units to the roof of the building, installed two electric vehicle chargers and a ground-mounted generator. So just minor changes to the site plan. I'm not being heard. Did anybody hear that? That on?
That's better.
Okay. Any questions, concerns from the board? Okay, moving on. There were no minor change approvals, so we'll go to item F1, which is a public hearing for a site plan review for issuance of an annual renewable special permit for operation of the Story Brothers gravel pit located at 48 Goose Pond Road, as shown on tax assessor map, R07 lot 48. The applicant is Robert Story. Owner is RJT Properties. So Carla, what's the overview?
Those of you who've been on the board a while, which I think is everybody who's been here for the last year at least, every year, operators of gravel pits have to go through an annual renewable permit review. And the purpose of that is to make sure that there haven't been any complaints or concerns from a budding property owners about noise or dust or those types of things. So Rob Story is here tonight. I don't know if he wants to speak with the board, respond to some questions, but he is here for, I believe, his third year after five years. He will not need to come every year. He'll do every five years after that. I can report that the town code enforcement officer, Bill Longley, has stated there have been no complaints made to him regarding this location during the past year.
Okay, and it looked like, scanning through the packet, there were zero changes from last year? Does that sound right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Applicant want to speak?
There, I'm Rob Story with Story Brothers, here for our annual renewal for our gravel pit. As Carla mentioned, this is the third time we've been here. We purchased the gravel pit from the town in 2019. And yeah, there have been no changes to the use of the pit over the past year. We use the pit for our own materials, our own projects. We don't sell any materials to any other contractors. So the traffic in and out of the pit is pretty minimal, and we've probably realistically used the pit maybe 20 or 25% of the time this, over the past year. But that's probably it in a nutshell, I guess.
Okay. Questions from the board for the applicant? Okay.
Looks pretty straightforward.
Okay, seeing none. Thank you. This is a public hearing, so I'll open up public comment. If anybody would like to speak on the matter, please step up, introduce yourself. Okay, seeing none. I will close public comment.
I will make a motion that we issue an annual renewable special permit for the operation of the Story Brothers gravel pit located at 48 Goose Pond Road, as shown on tax assessor map, R07 lot 48.
Thank you, Josh.
Seconded.
Thank you, Paul. Further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Unanimous motion carries. Thank you. All right, moving on to F2, which is another public hearing for a site plan amendment for Skellin's Greenhouse located at 201 Gray Road, tax assessor map U20 lot 70D, to replace the existing warehouse with a new detached 60 by 100 warehouse. Applicant Terry Skellin, owner, Skellin Agricultural Associates LLC. Carla?
Yes, the applicant, as noted in the review, is simply taking an existing warehouse structure that's attached to the building, the store, if you've been into the store you're referring to. And he's taking that building out and he's replacing it with a detached building that will be larger and more helpful for his business. I went out and visited with Terry, looked at the location of the proposed greenhouse to make sure that it wasn't visible to any budding properties because he isn't proposing any new buffering out the rear. But it's really situated in such a way that there's no one that can see this building, either from Route 100 or back on Tammy Drive in that area.
Looking through the packet, it looked like there was really no substantive changes of any sort.
There really aren't. There are waivers because it's such a simple plan.
Yeah. What was the size of the old building, do you know?
Do you call that?
I can ask when they come up.
Yeah.
Pretty close to 3600.
Okay, the old building was 3600. Okay, all right.
One comment. Carla, just a minor thing. On the first page, it states that the project is subject to Route 100 design standard. And then on page seven, it's talking about the Route One design standards.
Oh, a typo.
Yeah, just so, I don't know if that matters, if that's in our document or not.
You're right. We'll make that correction.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for Carla before we get to the applicant? Okay. Please speak.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us. I'm Terry Skellin, president of Skellin's Greenhouses. I don't hear any more, so Lee will probably do most of the talking. And plus, they push me around a lot anyway, so I just let them do it. But anyways, we took over that property in 2003, and we've used that warehouse since then. We've outgrown it. The warehouse itself is in pretty tough shape, and it's just time to be more energy-efficient and more user-friendly.
Okay. Questions from the board?
Well, the only question I have is, will it be the same material? So it's metal covered by sheathing or?
Yeah, it'll be a metal building. Lee can speak to it better than I can. Right presently, it's an asphalt shingle building with vinyl siding on it. Well, some of the vinyl siding's on the ground, but it's supposed to be on it. And it will be, you know, a metal building. Again, Lee can speak to it better than I can.
Yeah, I was just curious how you're doing it. Yeah, that's good. Thanks.
And you wouldn't expect this to change the traffic in and out of your business?
No, not at all.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. This is a public hearing, so I will open public comment. If anybody would like to speak on the matter, please come up, introduce yourself. Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment, bring it back to the board.
I would just like to, we've got six waiver requests. We normally read them off one by one. Is anybody concerned about doing them all in one fell swoop, given that this is an amendment?
No.
I don't have any concerns.
In that case, I will make a motion that we-
Hold on, hold on, one second.
I just had one comment on- On the findings of fact. On H exterior lighting, it says no exterior lighting is proposed. But I think I did see exterior lighting on the designs. Sorry, would you like to speak to that? I didn't-
So on that, we would-
Podium?
So on that issue, we would do the, what the town requirements were for exterior lighting on the building.
Do you need lighting?
I assume not, maybe over the doorway, just as the entryway, but just to light the footpath in and out of the building.
From the main building, that doorway or around the backside?
Great question.
Or both?
And where do you see that?
It's in the application.
What page?
Yeah, hold on a minute.
Because I don't see it on the plans.
Right, it's in the application. It refers to lighting. Hold on a sec if I can find that.
So, I don't know what page, what page is that?
So-
The other-
Yeah, it's page two of the application. It says lighting. There shouldn't be any exterior lights. It just says yes.
I also, I, might you have checked yes because there is existing exterior lighting? In other words, if there's existing, it doesn't matter what this would be. Is there anything proposed for the new building?
At the moment, there is existing lighting. I guess there, we don't officially have anything proposed for the new building, but it would be up to town regulations and insurance requirements.
I think it would be hard for us to approve it without it shown on the, so I think we're going to have to assume there is no lighting, and if they need it for insurance purposes. I mean, I don't think the town has any standards.
We don't.
So if you need it for insurance purposes, you'll just have to come back and make an amendment to the amendment.
Carla, could you clarify that if there's just a light over a doorway going into the building, I don't see that as exterior lighting. Do you agree or?
If it's external-
I mean, we're talking about lighting that could affect neighbors or be seen, right?
I think a condition of approval would probably handle it, that if the applicant determines that exterior lights on the building are needed, that he would-
To be approved by the code enforcement officers, placement in-
Oh, I want to do it.
Oh, okay, Carla. Now you're in trouble.
Fair enough.
Okay.
So, I will make a motion that, oop, now I gotta scroll way back, sorry. I will make a motion that we approve the following six waivers due to the unique nature of the property and the project, and the fact that this is an amendment to an approved site plan. The high intensity soil survey, a hydrogeologic evaluation, a traffic study, a market study, showing the location of proposed recreation areas, and showing the location and type of outdoor furniture.
Second.
Thank you, Josh. Thank you, Peter. Are these the same as before? There's nothing new here, right?
No.
Okay. All right, further discussion, questions? Okay, all in favor? Unanimous motion carries? All right. Can, do you think we can waive the reading? Like, there were no substantive changes for findings of fact.
Yes. I will make a motion that we waive the reading of the findings of fact.
Second.
Thank you, Josh. Thank you, Peter. Discussion?
Yeah, I don't, I'm, it really, I don't think affects any of the find, or would affect any of the findings from the prior, if we were actually looking at the prior approval.
Okay. All in favor of waiving the reading? Okay, unanimous motion carries? Okay.
So Carla, we have two proposed conditions of approval, and we're going to need a third.
Christina's saying you need to accept the motion.
You waived the reading, but you haven't adopted the-
Oh, you are correct. Thank you. Good catch.
Very good.
I will make a motion that we adopt the findings of fact as written.
Second.
Thank you, Josh. Thank you, Paul. Discussion?
Well, what about, sorry, but design and performance standards, we refer to Route One design standards applicable. Right, I've made that change.
That's what I mentioned earlier.
Paul brought that up a few minutes ago.
All right, so as amended, I guess. All right, all in favor? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. Now, the important part.
So one more proposed condition of approval.
I have a draft if you'd like it.
That would be lovely.
So this would be the third condition, and it would read that any exterior over the entrance doors lighting that the applicant would like to install be approved by the town planner prior to issuance of the building permit.
The only, only exterior lighting, you know, related to the amended site plan? Meaning, like, this isn't a carte blanche to go start adding exterior lighting throughout the whole?
Let's add for the new warehouse building.
Fortunately.
So we have three?
I will make a motion that we approve the site plan amendment for Skellin's Greenhouses located at 201 Gray Road, tax assessor map U20 lot 70D, to replace the existing warehouse with a new detached 60 by 100 warehouse, subject to the expiration of approval, the standard condition of approval, and the three proposed conditions of approval.
Thank you, Josh.
Seconded.
Thank you, Paul. Further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Unanimous motion carries. Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay, moving on to item F3, which is another public hearing. Elizabeth H. Johnson subdivision amendment to split lot number four, located at 104 Forside Road, tax assessor map U04 lot 10A into two lots. Applicant owner is Cove Development Corporation. Representative is Randy Smith from Knickerbocker Group. Carla, anything to add?
Not beyond what you've just said. This is a lot that fronts on Route 88. As you're heading south on Route 88, you go past Conifer Ridge Road, which is an existing older subdivision road. And right after that entrance, there is a parcel that's wooded that is large enough to be split as per our zoning ordinance.
Questions of Carla before we move on? Okay. Is the applicant here to speak? Randy Smith?
Hi, I'm Randy Smith with Knickerbocker Group. Thank you for the summary. That's the gist of what we're looking to accomplish. It was previously a subdivision that was created in 1977, amended for clarification in 78, and then a portion of this subdivision was used to create the moral properties subdivision, which is on Route One. SME, Sevimar Engineers provided the list of questions, and I have follow-up answers, Carla. I don't know if that's something you want me to read one by one?
Yeah, why don't you take us through them, please? Anything that was open that Dan had mentioned, yes?
Sure. So I'll probably read the questions first and then the responses. So the majority of the responses are, were written by Steve Roburge. He's a professional engineer with SJR Engineering. And then a handful of the responses were written by Knickerbocker Group. All right, so SME question number one, the stormwater narrative provided appears to include two 10 and 25-year rainfall events based on Kennebec County. Please update it based on the requirements of Appendix H of Chapter 500 for Cumberland County. So Steve stated that the Kennebec was just a typo, that the actual data was for Cumberland County, and he states as much in his response narrative. Question number two, the plans provided do not depict the pre-existing or post-development areas for the full development. Please provide plans outlining the pre- and post-development watershed boundaries for the site, and make sure that the total pre-development areas match the post-development area in the HydroCAD model. The response from SJR Engineering, the current large lot, so the current lot number four, pre-split, is an approved buildable lot from a previous subdivision. We have assumed in the splitting of the larger lot, that Lot A remains the buildable lot with no necessary stormwater improvements from the previous subdivision approval. That stated, we have provided a roof drip edge around the building for wall splash protection as well as stormwater infiltration with under drains. This provides stormwater quantity and quality enhancements to the runoff. You have a map showing which lot, excuse me, is Lot A and Lot B, correct? All right.
Yes, we do.
We have provided a stormwater plan showing the existing and proposed watersheds for runoff, water flowing towards Route 88, towards Lot B. The pre-development watershed area is not the same as the post-development watershed area at the design point. Existing watershed boundaries are contained within the blue solid line on the watershed plan. Proposed watershed boundaries are contained within the red solid line on the watershed plan. The proposed watershed, the proposed stormwater watershed is larger as it captures the new roof runoff, diverted runoff from the road by tipping the road to one side that was not a part of the existing watershed. All other developed areas within the lot, lawn, landscaping, woods, and other, flow through the existing woods into the soil filter pond. A small portion of the lot between the front of the pond and Route 88 are uncontrolled watershed and are added to the pond discharge in the HydroCAD model to determine flow quantity. Like Lot A above, building roof runoff is captured by roof drip edges around the building and filtered to the under drain. Discharge from the under drain is directed to the soil filter pond for further treatment and detention. Question number three, stormwater routing in HydroCAD should not be completed with TC paths shorter than five minutes. Please revise and resubmit the stormwater narrative. Response number three, Steve Roburge, I disagree with this statement as the time of concentration TC is dependent upon the flow path material, pipe, and slope conveyance. A TC shorter than five minutes makes the stormwater analysis computations more conservative. I have attached the same narrative with the word Kennebec removed and replaced with Cumberland. Question four, please clarify if this project requires review by the main DEP for stormwater quality under Chapter 500. It is our understanding that the project is too small for a Chapter 500 DEP review. That stated, we have provided for 100% water quality surface treatment for Lot B and the new road. Question number five, the project will require review by the inland fisheries and wildlife in accordance with the subdivision requirements and prior to the final application. So we have, as of today, submitted a letter to the inland and fisheries department. And Carla, I'm not sure if you saw it, but I sent you an email that is an amended submission package that has the original application and then all of the-
I did see that. Yes, I have all of that.
Okay. So all of the information that I'm reading tonight is in that, including that letter to the inland fisheries and wildlife.
Has Dan had a chance to review any of that yet?
The applicant's response just came in today.
Okay.
So Dan has not reviewed that. One of the conditions of approval, if we get that far, would be that any comments from the town engineer be addressed prior to the pre-construction conference. So I will have Dan review all of these responses.
Okay, thank you. Please continue.
Question number six, water supply. The development will use public water and has submitted an ability to serve letter to the Portland Water District. Please provide the Portland Water District approval as a part of the final plan application. I think similarly that it would be a conditional approval. Those were submitted, the eligibility or determination to serve were submitted around the 20th of November. So with the holidays, we should be receiving a determination response very soon. Similarly, question seven, sewage disposal. SME wrote apartment building, but it's actually two residences. We'll use public sewer. Therefore, the project will need approval from the Town of Cumberland Sewer Department. Please provide the Cumberland Sewer approval as a part of this final plan application. That was again filled out and submitted today, and there was some correspondence, but that will need some follow-up. Could also be a condition of approval. Section 250, design and construction standards. Please, question number eight, please label the slope of the entrance road on the plans and confirm that the minimum 3% slope for the first 25 feet is provided. That was confirmed and provided also a part of that package that we can pass on to SME. In addition to the written narrative is updated drawings. That clarifies, provides clarification as requested. Waivers and modifications. SME recommended the approval of the hydrological study and the waiver of the high intensities, high intensity soil survey, and something that got overlooked, but was the identification of 10-inch trees on the existing conditions plan. This was not requested by the applicant, but should be included in the review with the planning board. SME recommends approval of this waiver. General comments, Plan Sheet C6, lot division plan. The lot division plan should be prepared and stamped by an appropriate professional in accordance with the standard subdivision plan requirements from the Cumberland County Registry of Deeds. That was done. Also were stamped plans from Owen Haskell, professional land surveyors. Number 13, Plan C20. There is no C20, but I think they mean C7. Please confirm that the transform, that a transformer is on the pole or provide a pad-mounted transformer to service the two new lots. Across the street of Route 88, there is a pole with a transformer on it. The drawings have been updated to reflect connectivity to that transformer. Number 14, Plan Sheet C7, grading and drainage plan. Please replace the 12-inch culvert at the driveway entrance with a minimum 15-inch culvert to minimize clogging and per the town's street construction standards. Please confirm cover and clearances with the sewer line in your response. We have edited the size of the driveway culvert to 15 inches. Covered over the top of the pipes varies, but is two and two feet minimum. We are waiting for survey information of the sewer manhole inverts and Route 88 for the final sewer design and clearances. Question number 15, Plan Sheet C7, grading and drainage plan. Please provide sizing, invert and out elevations at the culvert at the roadway entrance with a minimum 15-inch culvert. Please confirm cover and clearances with the sewer line and water line in your response. We have provided for an 18-inch diameter culvert in parentheses, L equals 30, slope 1%. Invert elevation 99.35, invert out 99 at this location. The cover over top of the pipe is 1.5 feet. We have added 2 inches of styrofoam insulation under the culvert to help minimize frost heaving. We are wishing, waiting for survey information of the sewer manhole inverts in Route 88 for additional sewer design and clearances. We have added test pit symbols to determine depth and location for the gas and water line. That concludes the questions and responses from SME.
Peter, please.
Peter, please.
Carl, it just seems to me with items two and three, I mean, my engineering degree is from the Wheaties Box Top School of Engineering, but it just seems to me that, uh, those differences are, are significant from what, uh, our consulting engineers, uh, a- a- and it's, I would think granting a, a, a condition of approval on this thing is, uh, um, just way beyond the scope of a condition of approval until we can sort out the, uh, the major differences. I think the rest of them can, can work, but it seemed to me as there were some significant differences of opinion from our engineers. But again, that, th- there was a lot of verbiage there and I could have missed something, but, uh, it did seem like, uh, I wasn't comfortable that, uh, they had, uh, answered or met the concerns of, uh, our engineers, but I'm willing to, uh, listen.
Well, yeah, I, I agree with Peter that I seen, a lot of that was engineering, uh, information that we need con- confirmation from, but I do have another question. Are you familiar, Randy, with the Basswood environmental letter?
Yes.
Okay. So, from my own clarification, I probably am missing something. There's a comment that there are two wetlands and neither are of special significance.
Correct.
And then there's a statement that in a fill of up to forty-three-hundred square feet of wetlands, which are not, uh, special, of special significance is permitted. So, the first question is, how can you have fill measured in square feet? Should that be cubic feet? Are you talking about an area or a-
They, the DEP will look in terms of area.
Okay, all right, so that seemed confusing to me, but then above that, one of the wetlands is forty-seven-hundred square feet. So, which is obviously beyond forty-three-hundred square feet, which is permitted, so isn't that, I've looked at your, I think, five, s- five, eh, five C and the two diagrams with the wetlands. One is a very large one right next to where the home is supposed to be. The other is off near, uh, near the road, uh, the adjoining road, but that, to me seems weird that it needs an explanation of how if Maine allows forty-three-hundred, what do you do with the forty-seven-hundred?
Well, uh, firstly, I think, so Eric Lima was making a statement that in general, uh, these two wetlands are not within the shoreland zone, so they're not of special significance.
Mm-hmm.
Or they don't have any other considerations that would make them of special-
Correct, yeah.
-significance. Um, and I think he was making a general statement that in the state of Maine, through a PBR permit, that you could, if you wanted to, disturb up to forty-three-hundred square feet, uh, through that PBR if it's not of special significance. However, in our case, the development will be affecting neither of the wetlands. We have no plans to disturb them whatsoever.
Okay, 'cause of the proximity, I don't know about the setbacks, maybe no setback is required from the wetlands, 'cause the home is right next to, to where it is.
When it's of special significance, it is.
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, other questions for the applicant from the board? Do you have more you want to add?
I just wanted to speak a little bit more about, I can't read any name tags, uh, from here, but, um, the feedback related to questions, uh, two and three. My understanding of Steve's response to question two was that he was in agreement with, with SME. Um, in basically kind of clarifying his, his process. And then in question number three, he does, essentially what he's saying is that the analyses that he has, he has completed are, go above and beyond in kind of compensating for, um, the time of concentration, so it's more conservative, it's more, um, and, and I don't necessarily think that it would be diff- all that difficult for them to work out, should that be a conditional approval. Um, you know, this is kind of an interesting case where this was a previously approved subdivision, um, you know, Lot Four, which is the lot in its entirety, uh, Lot ten-A on U-four. Um, you know, should you not split it, I don't think any of this would be required, and we're just trying to, to essentially create one more conforming lot and, you know, if Lot A, the lot further away from, uh, Route eighty-eight, uh, Cumberland Foreside, or Foreside Road, you know, is, is, we're still adding drip line filtration and addressing stormwater management. Uh, and for Lot B, the lot that's closer, uh, to Route eighty-eight, I guess you could call that the, the newly created lot, you know, all of the stormwater, uh, that's hitting the house is all going into under drains and being fed to the filtration system, similarly with, with the driveway and, you know, the filter pond. Um, at least, uh, my interpretation of kind of the questions and answers was that, uh, they weren't really far off. I think it was just maybe coming together and having a conversation, uh, and just working through some of the smaller details.
Okay. Uh, Carl, what's your thoughts on that?
I think that the, um, board should probably have the public hearing. Uh, I know there's one abutter here that I've met with this week that's in the audience that has, has some concerns. I, uh, handed out a letter to you just prior to the start of the meeting from another director abutter who is in Florida, but also I've been speaking with and, uh, has some concerns as well, and I think in particular, uh, they didn't ask initially for the waiver from the identification of trees over ten inches, but as, uh, um, Randy stated, they, they would like that waiver, and I think that one could be problematic, uh, for the abutters in terms of no buffer being provided and so forth. Uh, so I think before the board makes a final decision, listen to that, and you may want to table for those reasons as well as the ones that Peter's brought up. Typically, engineering, uh, disagreements or, or discussions get worked out prior to the meeting. That didn't happen this time, um, and so I think it's appropriate that the board wait perhaps and let, uh, our town engineer really review carefully what's been responded to and, uh, give you one more letter for next time around with, uh, his approval.
Okay.
Carl, before you go to public, a, a few questions. One, only because I, as far as I know, this is the first time we've ever done a subdivision of an approved subdivision since I've been here. Are there any special considerations that we've got to factor in? I don't see why there would be, other than we're doing a site plan amendment for something that, for a subdivision amendment.
Right.
Um, whereas normally, if you took one lot and split it in two-
Right.
-you wouldn't be in front of the planning board, but I, there's nothing, my guess is there weren't any homeowners association or anything else, but that probably wouldn't be us anyway.
Right, there's, there, uh, it's an old subdivision, um, so this is, uh-
Um, in the, uh, outside agency approval status table, you got a slow to amendment with no status, I'm assuming that, 'cause it's a condition of approval, that would have to, there is no status, it's, okay. Um, and then you've got on the Maine DEP agricultural conservation forestry, where an exemplary botanical features, it says undocumented. Are we okay with, do we need anything on that, or are we set?
Uh-
Has it met, you know, has it met the requirements?
I, I would like Dan to weigh in on that, the town engineer.
Okay. Um, and then my final question is, in the Caswell's letter, they mentioned the ten-inch tree diameter. My assumption is, since the applicant didn't request it as a waiver, that that wasn't, that, that didn't go out in the public notice?
Well, that's interesting. I think it's not that we ad- we advertise what waivers are requested in a public notice. We do is to put all the information up on our website.
Okay.
So, I think actually the fact that the town engineer's comments were uploaded and that comment is there, a- a- as I said, I think the fact that both of the abutters picked up on that in their, in Dan's review, uh, makes me feel like there's, there's been enough notice of that.
Okay.
Thank you. Others, before we get to public comment? Okay. So, I will open public comment. Anybody who would like to speak on the matter, please come up and introduce yourself.
Good evening. Darrell Fisher, ninety-two Foreside Road. Uh, my wife, Barry. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. Uh, I have no problem with Nickabacher, well, he's a fine gentleman, he spoke well. I'm sure he has the best of intentions. If I was in his shoes, I'd be looking to split the lot as well. Money is money. Um, but my wife and I bought this house at ninety-two in, uh, this summer of two thousand and seven. We were so excited, such an awesome place. We moved from Manhattan and it was just a completely different world, and our only buying experience before buying this house was in Manhattan, where you don't have to really consider the adjacent lots. And when we moved, there was about eight acres across the street, another eight acres behind us, this lot diagonally across, and it was just so great. We had deer, turkeys, foxes. It was better than I ever imagined, and, uh, we really loved it. And when we came here, we came so that I could retire, my wife could work from home. We're home most of the time. And since that time, the lot across the street has two new homes on it, the lot behind us has two new homes on it. Nice people, good neighbors, I have no problem with it, but it's changed things. There's been a real growth spurt on the Foreside. There's been this clear cutting that's been going on, and the nature has changed, and, uh, I think it's a shame, there's, there's more traffic, there's cars flying down all the time, commercial traffic has increased, and, uh, you know, I know, I can't, you know, fight the tide and the money that's involved here, and I don't expect to, but if I don't come up and say my piece, shame on me. So here I am. What I really would like, and what I'm really here for is an assurance that the development of this lot does not use access on Chestnut Way, which was once upon a time a piece of my property that before I owned it was sold as an easement so that the lot behind me had access. And, uh, I don't know if you're prepared to provide that assurance, but, uh, that's what I'm really looking for, and, um, there's something else I had to, but, um, I don't, I don't do this very often, you'll have to, oh, I remember, I remember. Uh, if you go to one-oh-four-foreside.com, which is the website that is on the sign that they have on Route eighty-eight right now, uh, it's a nice website, it shows a beautiful three-D model of the house they, the one house they planned on the lot. It's very attractive, I'd be interested myself, but there's a page called the site map, or site plan, site plan, where it's very nice, they talk about what they're gonna do, and they say that, obviously I'm paraphrasing, I don't remember the exact quote, but it's a unique community because of the privacy of the large three-to-four acre lots. Okay? So, what happened to that? I don't know. And, uh, that's my piece. I, I, I thank you for your time. I, can you tell me what the plan is, if there's any regarding Chestnut Way?
We don't have any plans to use Chestnut Way as an access point.
But you're not ruling it out?
Right, doesn't, no, the language is actually been removed, so any deed forthcoming to, to inquire would not have any language left.
Could you come up and answer that question on, on the mic, please? If you wouldn't mind.
Deborah Wallace, also from Nickabacher Group. Um, when Cove Development bought the lot, um, from the Rennies, it had language in there to reference access to Chestnut Way, and that has since been removed, so any forthcoming sale of land, and we have drafted deeds from our attorney, that has removed anything. There's no reference to Chestnut Way, just to assure you, absolutely, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for putting that on the record.
Sorry, it's the same, basically same question. So that means the driveway, um, to this lot, whether it be one or two lots, will come off of eighty-eight? Thank you.
Please.
Um, good evening. Uh, my name is Chris Nolan. Um, I live at one-hundred Foreside Road, uh, and I directly about the, we directly about the property. Uh, our neighbor's at ninety-two and then we're at, uh, one-hundred. Uh, when I got this card, it was the first time I knew that it was going to be subdivided and that there were going to be two structures there when the property was sold from Catherine White to the Rennies, and then the Rennies to Nickabacher Group was my assumption that what we were told is only going to be one, uh, property there, so this is news to us that there are going to be two properties. Actually, the landscape architect who's walking the property and marking trees also had told us there's only going to be one house there as well, so this is all new to us, so we're just, again, similar situation, getting information and better understanding. I went through the website, tried to get through most of the information so I can understand it a little better. It's good to see a reference to apartment buildings was, uh, referenced earlier, that has been struck and replaced with, uh, I think residential structure, so that was, uh, good news. Apartment buildings there was a surprise. Uh, the two concerns I had written down, uh, were about water. Uh, when, uh, the development that my neighbor had talked about earlier, uh, was put in on the south side of our property, uh, the water was dealt with, I think it was also developed by the Nickabacher Group. The water was dealt with by taking a conduit and channeling all the natural runoff and running it under the road onto our property, um, and it took that water that had gradually come over our property and, and kind of focused it, so in rainy season, we get hit with a pretty good stream of, of water, so, uh, and that comes across our property, goes down a little stream, uh, to the north of our property, then cuts in front of one-oh-four and then goes down to the bay. So, uh, very concerned about how that water is handled and that the drainage that comes into that little stream, um, is not, doesn't overwhelm the stream, 'cause it goes right along. Our house ten is on the north side of our property, um, so we're right kind of close to this new development. Uh, so that is a concern, how that water gets handled and, and drains, that it, uh, that it recognizes that, you know, during rainy parts of the year, maybe even this Friday, um, we get quite a bit of rain and water running through that, um, through that little stream, uh, going by our tunity to properties. And the second thing is in looking at, and the second thing, the same thing happened when the property, um, between ours, uh, I think Chestnut Way into the back behind ours was, um, was there when we had that waiver to allow to build two properties, um, behind us, is that, uh, when two properties went in, the road, um, understandably got bigger, uh, so they had to get a waiver from us and, and from the previous owners of, of ninety-two, um, to use to get back into that, those two properties. So, um, so now that there's going to be two properties in one-oh-four, I was looking at the design and that road seems to have gotten quite a bit bigger, um, but it also seems to be pushing up closer to our property, so it's the whole, uh, property of one-oh-four, the road seems to be on the south side of the property going right along our property line, it seems to be a much, uh, you know, obviously a bigger road than it was when the, uh, the assumption was there was one property there, so, um, so those are just the, the two- are just the, the two concerns, the water and also the location and size of the road, being so close to our property. And particularly, with some of the discussions about the drainage coming off the road and going into that little stream between the two properties. So, those are just concerns that we have. But, other than that, I've nothing, you know, I share the similar concerns, watching all the wooded areas on 100, on Forside Road, we live at 100, getting developed. I mean, our house has been there for more than 100 years. Certainly, I haven't been there for 100 years. So, but that's, I understand, that's not what's before you today. So, that's just concerns of how that is all structured, and taking advantage of where the road is and the drainage. And certainly, I had not heard about accessing through Chestnut Way. That would certainly just cut right behind our property as well. So, but I thank you for your time. If you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
I'm Robert Clark, and live on 9 Conifer Ridge. My backyard is their side yard. Moved there eight years ago, from the Bay Area. The neighbors were, the setback was eight feet. You could hear the toilet flush next door. It's a different environment. We don't have any drapes. We have 30 turkeys we're feeding right now. We have deer, fox. It all comes out of our backyard, which is, which we assumed actually was bigger than it, than it actually is. Last January, Mrs. White was out wandering in back there, and I walked back, and I said, "Can I help you?" And she said, "Well, we're trying to find the boundary." And I said, "Well, I don't know where the boundary is." I had cleared out the undergrowth of the, of the part of the back, and built a trail. And my trail was, was about 20 feet into her property. And, she said that she wanted to sell the property to Mr. Wright, and he was going to leave it, he wanted to leave it as a buffer for his children to play in, and make sure that nothing would happen to it. I think he sold it two months after he bought it from her. And then, we started seeing surveyors and various things going on. And, we then saw the model of the one house on, in, on the internet. And, finally, I, yesterday, saw the plan with, Mr. Wright had, had covered his, his wishes. He put a 50-foot green strip in. It's in the deed, and I understand it can't be changed. There's no protection for the north side of the lot. There is a, a line that says that you, that they're gonna be 65 feet from the property, but it's not specified as to how it would be maintained. If this all goes through, we'd certainly like that set aside as a, the same way that the other side, the north side is. But, it certainly will change the, our backyard, which is what, where we recreate. The front yard is for the neighbors, as most houses are. And, it, it just changes the whole environment. And, one house, I guess, would be certainly better than two. And, I hope that we can get a resolution that would ensure our wilderness and privacy. Any questions?
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
I beg your pardon?
Thank you. Are there others that would like to speak? Okay. Seeing none, we do have a letter from one of the neighbors in the area here that I will read. This is from Benson Caswell and Diana Caswell, who live at 19 Conifer Ridge Road. This is dated today. It reads, "Dear Ms. Nixon, we are direct abutters to the proposed subdivision. One of the deciding factors at the time we purchased our home was the low density of homes and occupants in our neighborhood. I am asking the planning board to consider four issues of concern to us. One, review proposed subdivision as a commercial matter, not a residential one, because the lot was purchased by a commercial developer with the intent to profit from its development within a low-density residential neighborhood. Number two, reject the request for a waiver of criteria three, the identification of 10-inch trees, which we understand is required by Section 250-45. Without doubt, this requirement establishes a means to retain the neighborhood's environment, and one could reasonably argue it protects the neighborhood from a degree of development. Number three, do not find that the standards of criteria eight have been met. The proposed subdivision, which is wooded and undeveloped, will have an undue adverse effect of the scenic and natural beauty of the area, including its aesthetic and significant wildlife habitat. There are currently 35 turkeys that roost and feed in the area. Number four, the seller of the property deeded a covenant with a forested buffer border designed to provide privacy between his residential home and the proposed subdivision. We ask the planning board to condition their approval upon the establishment of a privacy border for the benefit of our property as well. This letter has been written to express our thoughts on this matter while we are out of town, and we expect them to be shared with the planning board and included in its minutes of tonight's meeting. Sincerely, Ben and Diana Caswell." Any other comments from the public? Okay. So, I will close public comment, bring it back to the board. Peter.
Carla, on, on number one, review the proposed subdivision as a commercial matter. I mean, does it make any difference who the owner is?
It does not.
So, that's a, that is really non-applicable, both from stated and within the planning board's purview. And I think as far as the water comment that the gentleman had, that I think by the time the town engineer and the developers get together, that any water type things will be in the town standards, and should involve the safe distribution or the groundwater, or the runoff, so it isn't gonna mess up anybody's property. So, but that, I think will depend on the town engineer to set the appropriate plan that prevents that. And I think the other one, that it, it is our purview, as far as buffering is concerned. I don't know what the answer is, but, that I certainly want to preserve the buffering for the neighbors. What that involves, I don't know. But, that is our purview, and if granting that waiver is gonna screw that up, I don't want to do it. But, how we, how we go about doing this buffer is beyond my pay grade, but I'd like to see it, I'd like to see it preserved.
Thank you, Peter. I think I concur with all of the others.
Yeah, I think, to respond to some of the public comments, I think most of us, maybe all of us, are very interested in preserving land and the nature of Cumberland. We have passed a conservation subdivision. But, for all of us also, I think the issue always is, on what basis could we deny an application? There are a number of ordinances, a number of regulations, reviewed by engineers, occasionally attorneys, and of course, we're looking at what we know from, from the very thick book of ordinances. At this point, I, I would, not being an engineer, would really like to have clarification from, from Dan, or whoever is assigned. There are some technical issues that in a way, as Peter alluded to, could I say, "Sure, that's fine," or "No, it's not fine." So, I would be in favor of, probably of tabling, if we get, if we get to that point.
Thank you, Paul. Carla, can you take us through the, the purpose of IDing the 10-inch trees? And, we always waive that, but...
We do waive it a lot. If you think of a large wooded lot, a 10-inch tree isn't very big. And so, the idea is that if you're developing, say, a big subdivision, that you wouldn't have to go through and flag every single tree that's essentially this big. This is a little different situation, I think. I drove out there today, walked around a little bit to understand what the buffer, the existing buffer looks like between your properties and where the houses will be. And, it's wooded, but it's, it's mostly hardwood trees. So, I think, I think I mentioned this earlier, I don't think the waiver in this case would be very appropriate. I think every single tree that's out there is important right now for buffering. And, further, to speak to Mr. Bingham's comments about, you know, what can you do? Well, you recall, especially with site plans, it's not uncommon for the board to ask that additional trees be planted, to create a buffer. In this case, maybe some evergreen trees would be an appropriate planting. And, that that area that is essentially shown on the plan is a setback area, that could be cleared right now. There's nothing prohibiting that. So, I think that might also be something that between now and the next time you, you look at this, that there be some language put on the plan that says this will be an under-stirred buffer, and so forth.
A little bit of a follow-up, Carla. There's nothing, however, I don't believe in the ordinance that prevents the cutting of a 10-inch tree once it's been identified.
If, if it's not in a, in a buffer area that's stated as being...
It is really just an identification.
It's identification, for the purpose of the board figuring out, what do you want?
But, but it is not, it does not mean that those 10-inch trees are sacrosanct, is all I'm... It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't provide any sort of protective...
Not in and of itself, but if, if a buffer area is identified for this project...
Right. But then, in a buffer area, it doesn't matter if it's a 10-inch tree or a 6-inch tree, it's in the buffer area.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I personally am a little uncomfortable moving this forward. I'd like to hear more from Dan, and then, I think it would be great if there was more of the buffer built into the plan, taken into the comments of what the neighbors have shared here. That's just my own view.
I'll move to table.
Thank you, Peter.
Second.
Thank you, Paul. Further discussion? Okay. All in favor of tabling this for now? Unanimous? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Moving on. To our last item for the night is item F4, which is a public hearing for a final major subdivision review for White Rock Terrace, a four-story, 55-unit, senior affordable apartment building with a 13,500-square-foot building footprint to be located off Skyview Drive on a 4.5-acre portion of the lot shown on tax assessor map R01, Lot 11-7, in the Cumberland Forside Village subdivision. Applicant is Kristen Martin of the Zantin Company. Owner is Peter Kennedy, Heritage Village Development Group, LLC. And the representative here is Travis Lattelier from PE Acorn, oh, sorry, Acorn Engineering. Okay. Carla, please, first.
Yes. As stated, it received preliminary approval last month. For that, it had conceptual site plan review by the planning board, and it's gone through peer review by our town engineer. And, it's actually, I have to say, was a very well-organized application packet for review. And I think it's Mr. Zantin, actually, who's at the podium right now to speak perhaps before Mr. Lattelier does.
Okay. Anything from the board for Carla? Okay. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for your time tonight. I'm Nathan Zantin, President of the Zantin Company, which is the developer of this project. With me is one of my business partners, Amy Cullen, who's a 10-year resident of Orchard Road here in Cumberland, and Kristen Martin, who's our project manager. And, as you said, our civil engineer from Acorn Engineering is Travis Lattelier. And, I think I'll just turn it over to Travis right now to address the issues that were remaining. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. As far as I know, we have addressed all of the outstanding issues from the peer review engineer. We had a couple of comments come in after I sent in my initial response, but those were quickly, quickly addressed, because it was information that I believe the town had that hadn't been forwarded to him. But, the result of the, the result of the comments was minor changes to the stormwater design, some technical details on the plans. But, overall, the site hasn't changed since, since we initially brought it to you.
Okay. I did have one question. Looking through the packet, I didn't see elevations in this packet. So, my question is, has anything changed from the last elevations that you showed us?
There, no, there were no changes to the elevations, which is why we didn't...
Still has those offsets and all of that. Okay. Very good. Other questions from the board for the applicant?
Well, I, I have a question. I don't know that it's, it's not an engineering question, though. But, I think, I've been on the board for, like, four years now. Oh, I'm sorry. I've been on the board for four years now. And I think this is the first income-restricted project that we've seen. And, and I, and I, this is great. I hope we see more of them. And I would just ask if you could run us through the restrictions that your financing provides.
Definitely. Carla had let us know that this was a question. So, we had submitted our statement of financial capacity. I'm not gonna go through all of it, but it's just a good thing to show kind of where our sources come from. So, we work through Main Housing's low-income housing tax credit program, and that's where our funding comes from. So, a large chunk of the funds will come from us receiving those tax credits and selling those tax credits to an equity provider. And, so about, we're estimating at this point about $6.4 million will come from the sale of those tax credits. We also will get about $6.5 million in subsidy that comes from Main Housing, which those, that subsidy is tied directly to them allocating the tax credits. We'll have about a $5 million mortgage from Main Housing, which will be an interest-bearing mortgage that we'll pay after the project's completed. And then, we've also applied for some, about $600,000 in home funds from the Cumberland County Consortium, which is a separate pot of money. But, part of the income restrictions that you're asking about come from the tax credit program. When we receive funds from Main Housing, we enter into a covenant of declaration that is... is filed with the Registry of Deeds and is attached to the property itself. So while we don't sell our properties, even if we did sell our property, it would still have that restriction attached to it because it's part of the deed, and that restriction is for forty-five years. We are required to provide the income restrictions that we were outlining to you in our previous meetings through that deed restriction, so... Does that answer your question?
Yeah, pretty much.
Okay. Just, what are those income restrictions again?
So for this project, it's that all of the units would be set aside for households earning sixty percent of the area median income. So that area median income changes from year to year. You know, it's a calculation put out by HUD and it adjusts every year. Some years, it changes a little bit or not at all, some years it's a bigger change, but we just go by those income limits and, and rent limits.
Thank you.
Okay.
What will, what will your tax status be for both the realty, realty side and income?
Yeah, we pay both. We're not, we're not a not-for-profit, so we pay taxes.
Oh, excuse me, and, and what about the senior housing section of that?
Same restriction, forty-five years, yep.
Other questions from the board? Okay. Thank you. So this is a public hearing, so I will open up public comment. If anybody was here to speak on the matter, please come up, introduce yourself.
Good evening, I'm Sean McCloy. I own a lot adjacent to the, the project here. I want to thank you guys for all the work you put into the, the project. I was flying solo at home, putting my voice to bed, so I, I missed what was presented, but I looked at the packet beforehand. Just wanted to see if the landscaping plans had changed to put some more coniferous trees along that screen between our properties.
Has it changed much from the original proposal?
I do remember some discussion about that. Can you guys comment on that? Has anything changed? As far as...
My recollection is that we asked our landscaper for an updated plan that added, I think, two evergreens between our properties and then a few on the sort of back end of the parking lot between the nautical drive houses that are a couple lots over. Whether that was submitted, I'm not a hundred percent sure, so I'd have to check on that.
Yeah, I don't think I saw that.
Okay, yeah, we can send that over. Yeah, we're happy to comply with that.
Great. That was easy. Thank you. Others for public comment? Okay. Seeing none, I will close public comment, bring it back to the board.
Waivers?
Are there any new waivers?
They've all been approved. One question for the applicant, which isn't in the proposed conditions of approval right now. We talked a little bit about, I believe you said at one of your properties, you did a parking study, I think one year after occupancy, just to see how that was doing. Are you guys, are you all set if we were to put that in as a proposed condition of approval? No concerns? Thank you.
Okay, so I guess we gotta do findings of fact, huh? And this is a major one, so I guess we should probably read them all. Okay. All right.
Think of it as your last chance to do all the findings of fact.
That's right. Gotta put some real flair into this one, okay? All right. Pollution. There are no flood plains or streams on the site. The project, the project will be served by public sewer based on the information provided. The board finds the standards of this section have been met. Sufficient water. The project will be served by public water. A capacity-to-serve letter is on file from the Portland Water District. Based on the information provided, the board finds the standards of this section have been met. Municipal water supply. The fifty-five apartment units will not create a burden on the existing municipal water supply as indicated in the capacity-to-serve letter from the Portland Water District. Based on the information provided, the board finds the standards of this section have been met. Erosion. An erosion and sedimentation control plan that includes housekeeping procedures for maintenance has been submitted, and the plan has been reviewed and approved by the town engineer. Based on the information provided, the board finds that the standards of this section have been met. Traffic. A traffic impact assessment dated ten twenty-four twenty-two was submitted that shows estimated trip counts. The repost states that the project will be a low-trip generator and will not require a traffic movement permit from MDOT. Based on the information provided, the board finds the standards of this section have been met. Sewage disposal. The project will not cause an unreasonable burden on the municipal sewer system as indicated in the capacity-to-serve letter from the Portland Water District and the town manager. Based on the information provided, the board finds the standards of this section have been met. Municipal solid waste disposal. The property management company or owner will be responsible for locating the solid waste and recyclable material to the space allocated for solid waste storage as noted on site plan C, sorry, site plan sheet C-10. A commercial wa, a, a commercial waste, is it, duplicate words there, a commercial waste hauler will dispose of the trash that is placed in the dumpster. Based on the information provided, the board finds that the standards of this section have been met. Number eight, aesthetic, cultural, and natural values. Letters are on file from state agencies indicating that the proposed subdivision will have no adverse of impact on any of the above features. The board finds the standards of this section have been met. Conformity with local ordinances and plans. The plans have been reviewed and approved by the town planner, the town engineer, and the town department heads. The board finds the standards of this section have been met. Number ten, financial and technical capacity. Financial capacity, the total project budget is approximately nineteen million. A statement of financial capacity, including funding sources, was submitted in the application packet. Technical capacity is evidenced by the use of professional technical consultants as outlined in the application packet. In addition, a statement from the developer was provided that gave an overview of past projects completed in Maine and New Hampshire. The board finds the standards of this section have been met. Number eleven, surface waters, outstanding river segments. The project is not situated in any of the areas listed above. Based on the information provided, the board finds the standards of this section have been met. Twelve, groundwater, the, the residential apartments, which will be served by public water and sewer, will not adversely affect the quantity of or quality of groundwater. Based on the information provided, the board finds the standards of this section have been met. Thirteen, flood areas. The development is not located within a one-hundred-year flood plain as shown on the applicable FEMA flood insurance rate map. Based on the information provided, the board finds the, the standards of this section have been met. Fourteen, stormwater. A stormwater management report dated October twenty-twenty-two was included in the application. The proposed development has been designed to manage stormwater runoff through best management practices, approved by MDEP. The plan has been reviewed and approved by the town engineer. Based on the information provided, the board finds the standards of this section have been met. Fifteen, freshwater wetlands. Wetland areas have been identified on the plans. Based on the information provided, the board finds the standards of this section have been met. Sixteen, river stream or brook. There were no streams identified on the site. Based on the information provided, the board finds the standards of this section have been met. Now, as far as design and performance standards, Route One design standards are applicable. Do I have to read through all of these? Carla? Christina?
I don't, I don't think you do. They'll, it'll be entered into the record.
There's no yellow flagging or red flagging? Okay.
No.
All right, so I'm gonna skip all that. I'm scanning through here, and I'm finding that everything says that it meets the standards.
Making a motion that we adopt the findings of fact is written?
Second.
Thank you, Josh. Thank you, Paul. Discussion? All in favor? Unanimous motion carries. Thank you. So...
So we currently have eleven proposed conditions of approval, Carla, and I think we need to add the twelve being a parking study after one year of occupancy to determine if area reserved for additional parking should be utilized? Is that...
And what about the landscaping that was mentioned?
I have a draft for that, if you'd like me to read it to you.
Please.
Okay. That a final landscaping plan with additional tree plantings between the building and Skyview Drive and between the building and nautical way be reviewed and approved by the town planner prior to the pre-construction conference.
Is that a condition, Carla, or a...
That would be...
The thirteen?
That would be condition number thirteen.
Okay.
And so do we still need another one for, you mentioned parking?
Twelve, twelve is the parking.
Yeah, so we'd have, we've got eleven. I'm just kind of flipping through them. I don't, I think all of the ones that are there are still applicable. Okay. I will make a motion that we approve final major subdivision review for White Rock Terrace, four-story, fifty-five-unit senior affordable apartment building with a thirteen thousand five hundred square-foot building footprint to be located off Skyview Drive on a four-point-five acre portion of the lot shown on tax assessor map R-01, Lot 11-7 in the Cumberland Forside Village subdivision, subject to the expiration of approval, the standard condition of approval, and the thirteen proposed conditions of approval.
Thank you, Josh. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Peter. Okay, further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous motion carries. Congratulations.
Well, great presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item G, administrative matters, new business.
Mr. Chairman, I have two items.
Go for it, Peter.
First item is that tonight will be the last meeting that our chairman, Jason Record, will be attending. Jason has been a member of this board for over four years. He served as vice chairman last year and chairman this year. In addition, for the last two years to show his dedication as a public service. Simultaneously, he also has served as a member of the school board, and the last six months has been chairman, and trust me from experience, that ain't a day at the beach. So Jason, on behalf of the town, the board, and everything, thank you for this dedicated service to our community and this board.
You're here.
You're here.
Thank you.
And my second piece of business is that the town council has appointed George Turner to join the board in January. George is a longtime resident of Cumberland. He has twenty-two years of experience on the Board of Zoning and Appeals. He also additionally has fifteen years of service on the town council, so he is eminently familiar with the ordinances and a lot of, all of where the various bodies are buried around town. So in addition, he is a realtor, so he is going to bring real estate knowledge to the board. So welcome, George. We'll be glad to see you in January. And again, Jason, thank you for what you've done.
Thank you for your comments, Peter. Can I just make a little...
Please step up.
Yeah. You can't tell them about your service in Shawshank.
About this, and I heard that Jason was stepping down. My only regret in deciding to put my hat in the ring to be on this board was that I'm taking Jason's place, and I'll try not to make the board less of a potent force than it already is. I've been, as Peter said, twenty-two years on the appeals board and sixteen years on the town council, longer than anybody probably ought to be allowed to serve. I will tell you, I'm delighted on one, one respect, and that is that the planning board isn't a policymaking board, and it's gonna be a pleasure for me not to have to deal with some of the ins and outs of, of that kind of situation. So I just, I hope I don't make this board any less of a good board than it already is, and I'll do everything I can to try to be respectful of the council's trust. So Jason, again, you've done a wonderful job, and all of you have, so, and I've seen a lot of planning boards, and believe me, we haven't always had great planning boards in Cumberland. I think Peter will attest to that. Again, thank you all.
Thank you, George, and thank you for stepping up. Others? Anybody? Okay. Yeah, I just want to say thank you to everybody. I've learned a ton being here. I think it's been three and a half years. I feel a little guilty, little bit guilty about stepping down one year into this term, but something had to come off my plate, so, and as I thought through that, I have zero concerns about the people up here just handling things. I've just been so pleased over the last three years, so just learning more and just everything flows very well, and I'm just very pleased. So, thank you. I hope that I've had a positive effect, and I suspect, you know, I won't go away completely, so I'll be around. Maybe you'll see me again, but that's it. Anything else?
Making a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Thank you, thank you. All in favor? Unanimous motion carries. Thank you.
I think the council's trying to take us over. They're sending us all their old...
Oh, they are. I've noticed.
Taking us...